Evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our November fourteenth, 2018 Planning Board Meeting. Barbara, would you please pick the roll call?
Chairman Curry.
Here.
Ms. Corning.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
He called a short time ago and said he wasn't feeling well and that he wouldn't be here.
Mr. Goldenberg.
President.
Ms. Corbino.
Here.
Mr. McNamara.
Here.
And Ms. Gannon.
Here.
Thank you. First on our agenda is approval, consideration approval of the minutes from September twenty-sixth, 2018. Everybody read them? Any comments or changes? No? I make a motion, we accept the meetings, the minutes from September twenty-sixth, 2018, as presented.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I will, uh...
I'm sorry?
That's the one I was not at.
Okay.
Well, I agree with the decisions reached, I will abstain.
Okay. Thank you. First on our agenda is a time extension for the Granite Point subdivision. We're in receipt of two letters, one from the town planner and one from Bibbo Associates, from Tim Allen. This is requests for the fifth ninety, ninety day time extension. Any comments from the board?
No.
No? Alright, then I'll make a motion that we, as per resolution twenty-seventeen, uh, I'm sorry, excuse me, the resolution would be for, this is the fifth request, and the time is...
Hold on.
Excuse me, from November third, 2018, up to and including February first, 2019. And that's in accordance with Town Law Section 276-7C and Section 150-13M, Code of the Town of Somers. There a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Same to you.
Thank you. We have, I believe, two public hearings this evening, I'm sorry. No, one public hearing and the possibility of scheduling a second one. First one is for Mantu, wetland permit. Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I think we need to move this differently in the future. I was confused thinking this was...
Good evening, Peter Gregory with King Copman Gregory Engineers. I think just since this is the first time that we've had a chance to meet since our field walk, we had the two weekends that we had a chance to walk around. And for the most part, everything does remain the same on the plan. We were able to locate and show some of the large maple seeds that were out beyond the garage area. And we've also realigned the pool to be more in line with the garage. I think just for a better layout to possibly use that garage space in the future. The areas don't, the disturbance doesn't change, our access remains the same. So for the most part, in terms of what we're proposing, based on what we discussed in the field, will remain, you know, the same as we proposed. We have had a chance to speak with Mr. Wolfle over at the town regarding the drainage easement on the other side. It's my understanding that they have been out to the property to clear out some of those drain outlets down in that lower basin to the rear of the site.
Hey Peter, can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
So I was out on the site today, Steve and I went out on the site and we talked about the drainage easement that the town has, right? I mean, obviously, I think we need to, we ultimately need to show it on your plans and that it exists. But as it relates to the work, you know, I think it complicates matters to be connecting the work associated with that, with that maintenance of that drain easement with this wetland application. It's my understanding that, based on conversation with Steve, that Steve, Tommy, and the pool company and the owner have an agreement in place that, that, you know, while I have equipment out there, Tommy will send some men and they'll collaborate on getting that cleaned up. But I don't necessarily think that it should be connected to this wetland application, I think that this should be separate because that's a town obligation. If we were in a situation here where we were talking about the applicant taking over in perpetuity, the maintenance of that basin, I might say, yeah, then at that point it starts to get connected to this application. But this is a one-time activity where cooperation, where you have a homeowner cooperating with the town to everybody's mutual benefit, I would suggest that it not be contemplated as part of this application, other than, obviously, it should be shown on the map. But other than that, any maintenance of it and cleanup of it, I suggest that that's a town obligation and the applicant is willing to work with the town to make that as easy as possible. And I, I just see it as separate from this. And this should have its own mitigation and its own...
It's a one, one-off action.
Yes.
This is a one-off.
Okay, I understand that, but I want to, wanted to be clear that in the future, forever, the town has access to that site.
Yes.
Without any difficulty and that the owner understands that.
Correct, there's, there's an existing maintenance easement over that.
Okay, 'cause it was an, you weren't present, but at our site walk, there was an informal discussion about how the property was going to be situated and that was not going to make it possible for the town to have easy access to, to the site with their heavy equipment or whatever they need.
Peter, I'm sure where the access would come in.
Well, I think right now, the, as far as coming through the easement, there's this sediment trap that's right off the side of the road, which may make it difficult to pass through this way. There are some trees, there have been some landscaping planted along the property line. I think in the past, people have come in, parked in the driveway, they've walked across and get access to that area inspected. But I don't know how feasible it's going to be to get trucks and equipment down along that, along the property when there's that basin in back.
Well, I can tell you that it doesn't look like any maintenance has been done on that basin in a long time. I mean, there were trees...
That's right.
You know, like this in there, right?
Nor in the road basin.
You know, so, um...
It's the real world, it's occurred in my neighborhood, I'm not critical of that, I just know it's important that the town have access.
Yeah, so what I wonder is, is there a, towards that point, since we have them in front of us now, maybe, we're not talking about the maintenance activities being connected in part, but maybe we do need to take another look at that, at that easement and extend it. Is there, is there an opportunity, Peter, that, that if easement, if widened, would provide enough room to get around the basin?
In the front, possibly.
Yeah.
Just take a look at the trees that are up there, just have an idea of what's in the way.
So maybe, would you be, I would suggest maybe if you can talk to your client about that, just to see that, 'cause that's an excellent point, right? We need to be able to get into it to maintain and, you know, with, with, we shouldn't have to go across their driveway, I mean, their backyard with equipment to do it. We should have a way in to, so that we can clean that. It's probably the reason why it hasn't been cleaned.
Right, and they've got like a swing set kind of a thing that looks like it's right in the path of the easement too, like a kid's climbing thing.
In defense of the town and in defense of the highway department and then since I was a witness to what went on in my neighborhood, I live in West Somers Park. And we're talking about houses that have been there for forty-five years.
Right.
And this took place about two years ago. Who knew that the town had this elaborate storm drainage problem that overlooks the Amberwalk reservoir, which is where it all goes? And it meant Tommy had to go across their lawn with heavy equipment, of course it destroyed the lawn, but I want you to understand, he did and addressed, rebuilt that trap, and then he put that lawn back better than it was. So it isn't that something awful happens, it's just kind of shocking when you see it happen in the town in due diligence, put that lawn. And I would say the distance that they disrupted was easily three hundred feet.
Yeah.
So it was very, very invasive and was necessary and was done successfully.
So Peter, maybe what we do is we show the easement and, and the other features that might be blocking and show a way to get into that easement so that the maintenance can be accomplished in the future? If there are any features that exist inside of it, like, like referenced by, by Vicki, then, I mean, obviously they're not permanent features, so they wouldn't be shown on your, your map, but maybe a note that, that, well, we'll talk about that, that should be part of the easement really, language. Any modification to the easement should say, you know, that if there's something in the way, that the town has the right to move it to get, to get into that location, right? But I think that, that's easement, that's, which is, you know, that's easement.
Yeah, or move around. I think that the, having spoken to the engineer and the applicant on that second site walk, it seems like everybody really wants to do the right thing. And I'm not concerned about the applicant before us now, I think, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Nancy, but I'm thinking about the future.
Correct, well, we always have to do that.
And that's, that's where, that's, I think, where we're all going with this.
Yes, that's, exactly.
But I just wanted to make it clear that I don't see the cleanup in any way connected to the mitigation for this, for this project. I think that the mitigation needs to be standalone.
I understand, yes, sure.
We're not looking to replace that cleanup, we just thought that while we were there, it might be an opportunity to cooperate.
Right, no, I know that, but I think there was some confusion at the last meeting that, of whether the cleanup was going to be mitigation. I know that when I was talking to Steve, that was, Steve Wolfle, that was one of his initial thoughts, right? And, you know, like I said, if it was in perpetuity that we're willing to take it over, then that might be something a little different, right?
Something we can present to them. And the reason I say that is because what their concern is, that they'd like to maintain some of the screening between their property and the adjacent property. And their concern is that if part of that maintenance to go in there and clear cut that whole basin, they're concerned about it. They'd like the ability to go back in and reestablish some screening along the property line as possible. So maybe if they do have some control, I think they should be enforcing the clean things. Or...
So, I mean, if your client is willing to think about that, right, and take over the maintenance of that in perpetuity, a lot of these challenges go away, right, relative to getting in and modification of easements, et cetera, right?
We can discuss it and then come back with both, showing what it takes to get into access to the rear of the property and what their feelings are about taking over.
You know, and I was speaking with the, with the homeowner today, it doesn't strike me as they would be adverse to the rain gardens we're asking for, for the mitigation anyway.
We're not, and what we're doing is we're considering possibly placing some rain gardens over adjacent to the garage.
Exactly, that's exactly right.
There are some downspouts, what I like, it's, what I'm considering doing is picking up the roof drains from our garage, direct them to the rain garden, and then just keeping our work around the pool just for a minute.
Yeah.
And I think, and that allows them to preserve their access to, they want to be able to walk around the pool entirely and be effective there.
Yep, and, and the, and the, my suspicion is that the area, impervious area of the roof of which you're going to be collecting and treating through a rain garden is probably multiples of the amount of impervious surface you're creating around the...
That's right, it's comparable, if not more.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would want to make sure that it's, that it's more.
Absolutely. And our area of disturbance will increase as a result of that, so we will be going over five thousand square feet and we will, you know, look to obtain coverage.
Okay, that's not a big deal.
I'm just curious, let's just say he does, his applicant, I mean, his client does take over the maintenance, are they held to a different standard than the town? Because otherwise, they won't be doing it for another thirty years, basically, based on history.
Well, so in the instance of the town's obligation to maintain, the enforcement body is the New York State DEC. The New York State DEC has not enforced, right?
Right.
So once the, if the applicant takes over responsibility for the maintenance, the enforcement body becomes the town. So the town may enforce in a different way than the DEC has. I would suspect we would.
I wonder if there are any existing in that...
Any what?
Condition, I wonder if there are any existing today that where the town has...
There are plenty of, there are plenty of private, I mean, we just had Greenbrier here not so long ago, right?
Right.
There are plenty of private systems that...
Okay, that are not maintained.
That, that, that don't get maintained at the, at the level that they would want. It's, it's something that I've spoken to, to Steve about and issuing some townwide initiatives to get all of those private systems maintained, or at least inspected. That hasn't gone very far, there's obviously a lot of complications around that when you go townwide, so, but I know that that's something that I've been talking to Steve about. So I don't know what the future enforcement would be, to answer your question, you know, we know what the past enforcement has been, but, you know, things change. The DEC could change enforcement on the town and then as a delegated authority, we will start, you know, but the obligation would remain consistent for maintenance, an annual maintenance in accordance with the schedule that was agreed upon, is what, would, is what would be part of the, part of the agreement. It wouldn't be, you could let it go for thirty years until it looks like this again, right? It would, there would be an obligation and then it would be up to the enforcement body to enforce or not enforce.
But, and just playing devil's advocate, if the road catch basin isn't cleaned up, it's kind of penalizing them because there's always going to be seepage from that into the, insulting their pond.
Yeah, the pond is actually not in that bad a shape, it's all, in terms of siltation, it's really just the vegetation that's in there.
Okay.
And it's better just to leave it as an easement with access.
I, I think, you know, I, you took, you know, and I, like I told Steve, maybe if we're in the process of modifying the, modifying the easement agreement, your client maybe can get some rights relative to planting on the berms or something like that, easement or something like that. So if we're going to modify it, maybe, you know, we would love for you to take it over, but I think if you asked, I doubt you're...
That's kind of why, that's kind of why I brought that up, that's, I was kind of steering you that way a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I... We can bring it up, we can discuss it with them.
But, but in the end, if we're modifying the easement agreement, they want to put trees up there, I'm sure we can modify the easement agreement accordingly to include that, a little, you give us a little more access and...
Yes.
You know, we'll take care of that.
I think they're willing to hear that.
And relative to what was represented for the rain gardens, that's, you know, all that I'd be looking for, right? Is, as long as we're treating a greater impervious surface, then they're, we're going to install, so it's a net positive, that, that's what, that's what I'm looking for.
We have an opportunity to do that.
Okay, Saret, do you have any comments?
No, none of us.
Any board member comments? Everybody feel comfortable scheduling a public hearing then for summer, what is it, twelfth, I think?
Yes. No, but I learned a lot about pools.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Peter, did I hear that the pool is going to be installed below the groundwater table? Because the groundwater is quite high.
No, we're lifting it, we're, if you, if you recall, the rear of the garage, it's about three to four feet higher, it drops down, we're going to maintain that elevation across.
Right, but how deep is the pool?
Oh.
At its deepest point, I mean, if you look at the elevation of the pond, I think you're going to have the groundwater right there.
My understanding is that when they construct the pools, they have a relief orifice at the bottom to relieve that hydrostatic pressure.
And the water comes into the pool?
Water comes into the pool under construction. Once the water is in the pool, that keeps everything balanced.
My recollection is they were putting three in.
Three.
They were putting in three valves.
So it's a one-way valve, just so I'm clear, it's a one-way valve, so water can't go out, right? Only, water can only come up through. So that's a critical point, we got to make sure that water can't go out, right? We don't want chlorine getting into the groundwater.
And again, Bedford Poolscape can explain that better than I could. But they are, they, they have encountered this before, they've assured us that this is something they deal with on a regular basis.
Okay, and as long as...
In the winter, when the, when the pool is emptied...
Well, that's what I was just saying, my other question is, do these, when the pool is empty...
But it won't be empty, it'll just be down a couple inches, you're not going to empty it, yeah, just drop it down a bit.
Right, but you never know, in the future, if some future homeowner has to empty the pool for some reason, do these valves remain operational?
I believe they let water back in.
They will, they will remain operational, so in the future, twenty years from now, they'll, the pool won't crack and that, basically, okay?
I'll confirm it.
Yeah, why don't we confirm that stuff?
Absolutely.
Do you feel we're ready for a second public hearing or you want to shut?
I'm, I'm comfortable with the, with us setting the public hearing, but I think we've got some work to do on the plans to get ready. And I think that as long as you're, you know, committed to getting the work done between now and, and the scheduling of the next public hearing, I mean, excuse me, and the next meeting, so that the public would have a set of documents that reference that, you know, the things we've spoken about, relative to the easement and the rain gardens and that kind of stuff, I, I think that we can set, and if, and if for some reason, we're not ready, then we won't have the hearing.
Well, you will have the...
Wait, I'm confused, I'm setting it now, but you can open it and not close it, however you want to do it.
Yeah, we can keep it open.
So I'm confused, because the permit is, the, the wetlands permit is for the work on the pool, not the mitigation at the easement.
Correct.
So the, so what you're asking him to show on the plans is...
I'm trying to show the easement, because it's part of the site code.
But it's not part of the approval process.
Correct, right.
Okay.
Other than, we might have to modify it to allow a little bit of access, but that's it.
Modify the easement.
And, correct. Easement to get access, that's the only thing relative to the easement.
Because we're not going to represent any work occurring over on the ground.
Correct, right.
Everything just...
Correct.
Right, just the actual easement.
Just show the easement that it exists.
Right.
Okay.
And then if it needs to be modified to provide access, show that.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
And I, I think you briefly touched on at the beginning, the two, the two maples, I think, in the back identified, just...
You're on the plan.
Yeah, just make sure, show the, the drip line for the protection.
I measured the canopy, we have an idea of how far it extends beyond the trees, and that's going to be reflected on the plan.
Okay. Any other board member comments? Alright, then make a motion, we set the public hearing for December twelfth, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. How come his beard looks so much better than yours?
Who are you talking to?
You, I'm talking to Joe about your beard, I mean, there's hardly any grade in this.
Mine's still in scruff phase, you know, I got fourteen days, believe me, by December first, this will be shaved.
Mine would look well like kids', but I'm preparing for an annual gig playing Sampras, so we put a little, a couple extra inches on it.
Better hurry up. It's not going to be down here.
I, I prepare to be standing another way.
Okay, next.
Peter, just give me a call if you want to go over. Okay.
Next on our agenda is the Odell Wetland Permit. Actually, all we're really going to discuss tonight is the scheduling of a public hearing at our special meeting, is that not correct?
Well, we have a couple of things, I think the applicant's here, there's another thing they need to go over, do you need to go?
Did you need me to present anything?
Sure, if you just, if you'd introduce yourself, please.
My name's Andy Chung, I'm the engineer for the Watershed Act Council. I presented the plan at the last...
Right.
...special meeting.
Right.
Wanted to recap what we're, what we're planning on doing on the property, or anyone that wasn't the last time.
Anybody, I don't, I think so, I think we're all pretty much agreement, it's a win-win.
Absolutely, yes. Absolutely.
Okay, the first thing you have to do is, you have to make a motion to actually hold a special meeting...
Okay.
On the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
Okay.
And then you can say that you want to have the public hearing for this.
Alright, there is a meeting already scheduled on the twenty-ninth, but it's not for the Planning Board, so make a motion that we hold a special meeting at seven o'clock on November twenty-ninth, 2018, for the purpose of discussing, holding a public hearing for this agenda item.
No, for, for the purpose of having.
For having, I'm sorry, for having the public hearing tonight, we're going to schedule the public hearing to take place on November twenty-ninth at seven o'clock.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the second part of that is, we're going to have a, oh, that's good enough.
You're going to schedule.
We'll schedule, we'll schedule the public hearing for November twenty-ninth at seven o'clock, okay?
Okay.
Should, I imagine it's going to be about ten, fifteen minutes tops.
At most.
At most.
We'll, we'll, this will be right in the background.
We'll try and make it look...
Right, this is at the front, right.
Should we also mention that...
Yes.
Other boards are holding meetings at the same time?
But they're after us, aren't they, seven-thirty?
The town board has a meeting from five to seven.
From five to seven.
You are meeting seven to seven fifteen?
And then, then...
And then the town board is going to reconvene a special meeting.
At seven-thirty.
At seven fifteen.
Okay, well, because another board is also having a meeting, I think the architectural...
Yeah, I've spoken to Denise, any of the other boards that know about it, and they will be meeting in a different room.
Oh, okay.
I just didn't...
I think it's the architectural review board.
Yeah, it was the architect thing.
Okay, so now I do have to make a motion though, to schedule the public, I just, just said we were going to discuss that, right? So I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing on November twenty-ninth, 2018, at seven o'clock.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that's going to be confusing.
Well, it's out in the public, that's all we really have to care about, yeah. Next on our agenda is the project review from North County Homes. This is a re-subdivision of two existing lots. One contained an existing family, single-family house, and the second lot has been a vacant landlocked, landlocked lot, and it needs special permits for stormwater management, erosion and sediment control, steep slopes and tree preservation. The single existing house is going to be removed and the two new houses are proposed to be constructed. The homes will be served by public water and private septic. The lots are located at Three Cardinal Way and it's in an R forty zone. We're in receipt of two letters, one from the town planner and one from our consulting engineers. Evening.
Good evening. Jackson's running late, so I'll just do my best.
Okay.
He should be here shortly.
We want us, we can, I don't think invasive species would take that long, you want us to skip ahead to that or the, or the calendar?
To you.
Why don't you, we'll wait for him, alright?
Okay, okay.
Everybody have the calendar for 2019?
Yes.
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 Everybody okay with it? Alright, make a motion to accept the two calendars, one is for the regular and the others for the, what do they go, it's called supplemental?
If needed.
Supplementals, if needed.
If needed.
Calendars proposed for 2019. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's good timing.
Good timing.
You're up.
You saw this a month or so ago, it's a two-lot subdivision, it's the existing house, which is going to be demolished, two new houses with new driveways, septics and wells off of the Cardo Way cul-de-sac. I believe I addressed most of the comments, the consultants went over some, some things with Saret, and one of the comments was a landscaping plan, we're going to be working on that, but we, hopefully you can schedule a public hearing.
Joe and Saret, you want to...
You want to go first?
Yeah, I had some conversations with John, our office, I think, yesterday received the revised plans, which hopefully were in your packages, you did not see them in advance, so we haven't reviewed them yet, but from our conversations, hopefully this incorporates the additional items in my memo. He had given back a memo saying what he had responded to, but there were still additional things that needed revision. And from our conversation, I think, hopefully I will see them on this plan, so we will know, you know, for the next meeting. And we actually had some correspondence and I, I think we're going to be okay.
Okay. Okay. Joe?
So, the, I was out here today. Obviously, Jack's been working closely with our team. He's made, he's made a fair amount of progress on, on getting our comments addressed. Steve Wolfle and I did a site visit today. You know, one of my concerns is that, you know, we're at forty-one thousand square feet of disturbance, where if it was forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty square feet, there would be other stormwater requirements that are not being triggered by this application right now. So Steve and I went out there and took a look to, to really started to say, you know, because, because the direction we're heading in, if let's say it stays at that, right, let's say we're all convinced that it stays at forty-one thousand and it's below. We're heading in a direction of requiring a surveyed, staked, you know, construction fencing around those limits to make sure that we do not go beyond that forty-one thousand, with some very strict requirements about if you, if, if it is exceeded, the, the dam, you know, the notice of violation and the damages that will proceed, stop work orders and redesign and all these other things. And so we want, since that's the direction we're going in, we said, well, let's go out there and take a look to see, you know, maybe there are things that are, we need to take a better look at whether they're represented. Maybe we actually are over forty-three thou, you know, over the one acre disturbance. So some of those things, Jack, that came up, where there were some specimen trees, for example, right? Some big trees, one in the vicinity of the house, one in the vicinity of the existing pool. Are those coming out? Are they staying in? And if so, have we included those disturbances? Are we should show them? I think, you know, the, the code requires us to show specimen trees. So those, you know, and when I say, I mean, you, the trees that are out there, I think it's over eighteen inches in diameter. So we should show those, and you, we should be thinking about, if you're going to be removing the root balls, the root balls, and those things are going to be big, and let's make sure that the limited disturbance adequately reflects those.
I think those specimen trees are located in the middle of the disturbed area.
On the house too, you think?
I think so, because it's an existing house.
No, the, it was, no, the proposed house, the one, no, the one on the left. There's a huge tree right there, right in like, right on the backside of it, there's a huge tree. And then right next to the pool, there's another huge tree.
This pool, existing pool?
There's a huge tree like right here, and there's another huge tree like right here. This is like a big pine tree over here, which is outside of you, but it's going to be right there if I can, you know.
Why wouldn't we take it down?
I just want, I just want to clarify what we're doing. I just want, because, because of the direction that I'm, that, that I want to go with the limited disturbance, I don't want to put that on you, and then you get out there and you realize you can't grade the site the way that you want, because, you know, we don't have enough grading on here. I'd like to see the grading that shows that we're not going to get beyond that limit, because I'm going to require you to have, to basically survey it, put a construction fence at that limit, and serious consequences for going past. So I just, if I'm going to do that, I want to make sure we're not doing that, and then it's inevitable that we're going to go past and we're going to have a problem. I'd rather just deal with it now, basically.
No, I understand that. I mean, the, the limited disturbance is kind of conservative, and it was calculated by the, the land surveyor. I think we can stay under it, and I think we stay under it.
Yeah, one, one thing about the trees, early on, you had indicated that, this was a question that came up, that you needed a tree removal permit, but we had no, no permit and no indication of how many trees would be removed. So that sort of goes along with what Joe was saying, and that was in my memo as well, that we need you to identify what trees are being removed and complete a tree removal permit and pay the appropriate fee.
Well, we're getting the trees, we're working on the tree survey, right?
Yes, we are.
All right, so.
We'll have all that.
Yeah.
You know, and, and we're going to include a note on the plan to the effect that I just referenced. I mean, you know, I didn't see the final grading on here. Is that?
There's, there's final grading. There's grading on the driveway.
I just didn't see, I just, I didn't, I just didn't see when I was up there, but, and I looked at the other ones on a digital copy, so it doesn't always come through, it doesn't always come through. So if you're confident that you're going to be under those, then please add a note to the plan that says the limited disturbance will be staked out by a surveyor, and that we're going to put a construction, a, an orange construction fence at that limit, right?
Correct.
And, and Steve Wolfle and I spoke about it, and, you know, you can't go beyond that.
Okay.
There's already, just saying, I was out there, there's already disturbance in areas that are not shown as disturbed on this plan. Now, you're not in construction, so, but there's areas right in front, right off the cul-de-sac. Somebody unloaded a machine or something like that and disturbed some areas. So I'm just saying, you know, Steve, Steve was suggesting that we should throw in some Coltechs on these buildings to at least deal with some water quality problems. I know how challenging that's going to be for you, given the tightness of, of, of the, of the lot, right?
And I have to maintain certain distances from the septics and, I, I'll take a look at it, though. We'll take a look at it.
So, so that was one thing that, you know, my concern is about the forty-one thousand square feet. Are we going to stay under? Because obviously, if we were over it, there would be a lot more stormwater on the site than there is. And there is no drainage on this road. The drain is not like we have a robust drainage system on this road. So it's, it's, it's a very high concern. I think even though it's not in the code, there would be, this applicant would, application and the community would benefit from some stormwater.
Okay, I'll, I'll look at the driveways and the house and see where I can put some units.
Okay, and the other thing, what do we, the existing well that's there, Jack, it's just right off the septic. I mean, I know that we're not using that for drinking water supply, but is that being abandoned or?
Yes, well, when we go to the health department, we have to get approval for the septic, so the health department approval.
So maybe we should just show that to be abandoned per health department or something like that.
Uh, there might be a note there someplace already.
Okay.
I will.
All right, that's all, that's all the additional things that I had based on the site walk with, with Steve today.
I, I think what he's trying to say is he wants to make sure, and it behooves you too, to stay under the forty-three thousand. Otherwise, the penalties are pretty severe, aren't they?
They're pretty severe, right.
Right. And, 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 you know, the, we, I would like to see some stormwater, even though I can't necessarily mandate it because the code doesn't give me that flexibility, right?
No, that's fine. We'll, we'll look at it.
But if you can put some in there, it would be, it would be helpful.
Okay, sure.
Especially from the impervious areas.
Yep. Board member comments? I'm sorry, are you done?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to go through them. My memo is pretty good. They've made some good progress.
I saw that, yeah.
I'm just reacting to the, the existing road setup.
And I know this hasn't come up, but a couple of people have said to me, I mean, are you guys, when you finish with this, where do you equipment store next door? Is that going to be removed or is that going to stay there?
On this site?
No, on your, on your property, I guess it is. Are you next door to it?
Yeah, I am. That's my own, yeah. It will be removed.
Okay, I, I know we can't.
And one between I'll be using here.
I know we can't hold your feet to the fire on, okay. I mean, you're cleaning, you're obviously doing an unbelievable job cleaning the neighborhood up, so, okay. You know where I'm going?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Any other board member comments? Okay. Let's see, that would be the same, same, same day, set a public hearing for the 12th?
Yep.
Joe and Sorette, you okay? Feel comfortable with that?
December, yep.
Okay, make a motion that we set a public hearing for preliminary subdivision approval on December 12th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Jack, let's just try to pin down some of these, out, you know, this, this, this final item that we, that I just wrote up verbally tonight before that meeting would be great.
Absolutely, yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's all right.
It's a quick meeting, all right? Delay you after ten minutes, you know?
Okay, we already did the calendar, so last on our agenda is discussion on the invasive species. Sorette, why don't you lead this?
All right, well, there was a lot of questions at the last meeting. You asked, what were the state regulations? I sent you a lot of paper on that. Since that time, the town board has moved forward in drafting something for the town based on the, the one in Soltaire, the town of Soltaire, which is on Far Island. And that is the one that is in front of you. And essentially, what it does is, if you read it, you know, fairly, it's fairly straightforward. It's basically saying any new bamboo is prohibited, and if you have bamboo on your property, you are required to make sure that it does not invade somebody else's property, or you, you know, will have to stop it, you have to use certain materials and ways to stop it, or the town will come in and make sure that it, it is stopped. So I think it's a fairly straightforward ordinance. You know, does the state do regulation of this? Yes, it does. Does it hurt? And if we can have our attorney here to answer this question, whether or not you have another layer based on the town. Joe, I think that's really the issue that came up the last time, is was this already taken care of at the state level? And why would we need it at the local level?
I think the most important reason to address it at the local level is because it, it also sets forth procedures for how you follow up once it's determined that there's bamboo present. So it gives the owner the opportunity to show the building inspector, you know, whether, there's this presumption that you allowed it to grow if it's on your property, but if it predated you, you can come in and show that. And it sets forth a specific procedure for, I guess I would say, due process in how it's handled, and then also for what the follow-up is. So while it addresses a situation that is also addressed by state regulations, it does it in the context of, of how it'll actually be handled in this building and how you follow up.
And since we first started on this, which was, what was it, October?
September.
September, okay. I've since found out that, when we were involved in this, we weren't involved from the bamboo point of view. It was just invasive, invasive species. Since then, it is our own new building inspector who specifically forwarded this to the town board for their consideration. And in light of that, he's the one clearly who is looking for a tool to use.
Yeah, it gives him some certain.
It gives him, it gives him added, and in that sense, I, I back off from my original position. And I see that he would like this, and I wish him well.
I read through, if I understand correctly, if we're neighbors and one of us has bamboo, if I don't make a complaint, it never comes to anybody. Is that correct, or the person that's invading their property?
It certainly never, it's written so that it wouldn't trigger the provisions of this code. I mean, there might be other civil remedies available to an owner.
Two neighbors could be happy that they're having a bamboo patch.
That's right.
Okay.
But what, what I, you know, I guess what I'm curious about is, and this is the first time I've seen this, but, so we, we have an application in front of us where somebody wants to put a pool in, and their property is loaded with bamboo. Does, does this regulation kick in, or is it only if somebody complains? Or is it when it comes to the town's attention?
I interpreted this as if somebody complains.
Yeah, no.
You can have bamboo, existing bamboo on your property.
Yes, it allows.
Where in this town is it being?
It's only if somebody's complaining.
As long as it's not invasive.
I see, okay.
Then if it's invasive, if somebody complains.
I got you, okay.
Creeping Virginia.
But Joe, to your point, so if it's an invasive species and we're disturbing it, are we encouraging, I mean, who knows how the bamboo grows and what we're doing by digging it up if we're encouraging its growth further?
Yeah, we might have to handle that. It's not part of this, I guess what I'm hearing is it's not part of this ordinance.
It's something we'll have to deal with in the normal course if I think about maybe questions we might ask at the planning board.
Why you have to be a troublemaker?
According to this, you're prohibited from planting this.
Right, you can't plant, you can't plant or grow it actively as, you can't initiate that process. And I think the reason, from a public policy perspective, the reason code provisions like this depend upon someone reporting it is because otherwise you might read into the law, an obligation of the building inspector to be driving around looking for invasive bamboo, right? So you don't want to add a layer of burden to the building inspector. You just want to give them an arm with which to handle it if it comes to their attention. So there's an active prohibit, prohibition on, on growing it or planting it, right? But if it's, if it's invasive and somebody else complains, it just gives us the opportunity to go in there and make sure it's controlled.
So, go ahead. Joe, if we had a site plan before us, and there was, thought that there was, you know, based on observation on a sidewalk, and I'm thinking of the property along Mayapack Avenue, where we all, you know, observed, and there was invasive species on the slope, the berm, the, the, the big, the big berm.
Right.
And there was discussion of, do we remove it? Well, then who would maintain the removal of it? I, I think those are the kind of thoughts that were going through my head when we originally looked at this, because it was invasive species, not limited to bamboo.
Right, right.
And we didn't have all the.
Yeah, right.
And I think at that point, you'd have to, upon site, at the point of site plan review, say, where are the invasive species? Is it practical to have the applicant remove it and keep it removed?
Right.
I don't think a slope-facing road that with that much traffic would, would really be a realistic goal, but there might be other instances where you could do it, so I.
Right, and I think as a consideration of site plan approval and potential conditions that might be applicable if it was viewed as a proper planning tool, I think you could do that. I also think, as you know, that would, a site plan approval would come with a public hearing. In the context of that public hearing, a member of the public or a neighbor might become aware of the existence of it, and in that case, they could follow up on it, of course.
We make them highlight trees now. We can force them to highlight.
It's amazing if you read through that list of invasive species, I mean, you would have thought, the one, it's referred to commonly as burning bush. It's been, and there's some maples, I mean, the, the, most, ninety-nine percent of homeowners aren't going to know that.
Right, that's the thing, right.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I've got a burning bush in my backyard that I transplanted from my father's house in Mayapack about fifteen years ago. It's got to be half the size of this room. So we never want to have to dig that thing out, that's for sure.
All right.
So, so the main, so the main question is, at the last meeting, we asked the town board to wait. Well, they didn't. To, no, they haven't acted on it yet.
Well, no, they set a public hearing for the law, and we have a copy of the law.
Yes, but you still have the opportunity because we wrote a memo on your behalf. Now you want me to write a memo saying that you are now in receipt of this and you are in favor of it. That's what really the action is, that you need to direct me to take or not to take.
Well, one of, one of six tonight, I say yes.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
I do, agree.
And thank you for providing the opportunity for us to look at this in this context and discuss it. It really helps.
Right.
All right, well, we're so early. Anybody want to talk about anything in general?
Yeah, just one thing I want to say about invasive species. You may, may be aware of this already, but the Open Space Committee, like, a year ago, applied for, maybe two years already, maybe three years already, I don't remember, applied for and received a grant to take care of the invasive species for a certain small area at Anglefly. So, you know, there are grants available for, you know, organizations to get rid of these things. And second, you know, the planning board, whenever it looks at a site plan, if there are invasive species that exist on the site in general, can make that part of their, you know, site plan approval to remove them.
The Open Space Committee?
Open Space Committee.
Applied for a grant?
Yes.
That is applicable to the Anglefly?
Correct.
The people on the Open Space Committee are one and the same as.
There were two, two people on the Open Space Committee.
Who worked on the grant?
Who worked on the grant specifically.
Any other board member comments? I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and our next meeting is December 12th, 2018, at seven thirty. Motion to adjourn?
Wait a minute.
Our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Our next scheduled meeting, special meeting, is November 29th, right here at seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Then if I, in case I forget at that meeting to say it, it will be followed up in December 12th with our regularly scheduled meeting at seven thirty. Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Thank you.